David?
Okay.
All right, so we're going to reconvene and we're going to start off with the board reports. I'll go around this side of the table, so Betty.
I will just mention that in February, Secretary of State Pete declared February 22nd, High School Voter Registration Day, I don't know exactly how he declared that word out to the high schools to inform their students about voter registration. So in Marshalltown, we set up, we helped two school districts with that, although the 22nd was a snow day for both of them. But we were in Marshalltown, I was with a group that was in Marshalltown and over in East Marshall. And it was just, it was such a delightful experience, the students were just, they were just so cool in both school districts, very, very different school districts, but that was, it was fun to see. So that was, that's my board report for this time.
Very cool, thank you.
Um, I just want to say how much I appreciated the Council's presentation. Earlier, I'd heard Chris speak about this and I thought it was extremely interesting. Since I've been on the board, we've focused on closing the gap educationally and we've talked about early childhood and when Governor Branstad, everyone has to read by the third grade or they have to be held back. And then, of course, we couldn't enforce that. I don't know if it was a good idea or not, but so we've been working on this for quite some time and I think maybe this model will serve very well for the entire state and I hope it does.
Absolutely.
I had an opportunity to speak with a couple of the senators during my confirmation process. And one was the Chair of the Senate Education Committee. The gentleman has some very strong views on education and, but we had a very pleasant talk about that. And had an opportunity to speak with several teachers in a couple of districts personally and and tried to get some feedback from them as to what they thought we could do as a state to attract more young people to get into education. So we had some interesting conversation on that, really interested that one said that the big problem, Rod, isn't so much that you're having to attract new teachers, just what are you doing to retain the ones you got? And you know, we have some real problems in some of our districts and this teacher was, they had some real behavioral issues within their district that, that they just don't feel being met at the district level. And so they're looking hopefully to change that, but, but change is slow. And it will come about, but so not only is it the shortage of getting them, but there's the issue of keeping them as well.
Thank you.
I don't have a report this long.
Just a couple of things, I did, I did pen a letter to the editor for Davenport and interestingly enough, it didn't get published. I'm not quite certain what I said. But I did want you to know that at least they heard from us and I didn't, I signed it, Mike, of course, not, not the board, but anyway, it was an interesting experience and TJ did write me back and thank me for doing that. And again, unfortunately, I don't know if they actually ever put it in a paper. I visit a number of school districts regularly and if I talk to teachers, we're echoing exactly what you said. Okay, I wouldn't do this again, I'm not doing this again, find another job. Not recommending to young people that they go into education. It's a terrible thing to say today. We definitely have some, some problems that way and we need to be conscious of what the state's trying to do to rectify that and what we can do as a board, because that really pains at my heart as a 33-year veteran of the, of the teaching, of the classroom. So anyway, yeah.
Well, I sat in on a NASB webinar on special education students and post-secondary success. Was interesting, some, some really good ideas and one of the biggest focuses to let these kids have that experience before they graduate from high school to get out and see what there is available to them firsthand. And that was, it was interesting, it was a good webinar. I'm not sure they call it office hours yet or not.
Oh, yeah, yeah, office hours.
I also was involved with a school accreditation visit to Nash County, North Carolina. They're done remotely because of COVID. There was a five-member team, there was one from South Carolina, two from North Carolina, Alabama, and then yours truly, but I think all total is probably 40 to 50 hours of work and we evaluate 31 standards and each standard has like five rubrics to it. And it's, it's pretty intense, but it's, I always say it's a lot of work, but when you're done, it's always worthwhile and you really learn a lot, especially looking at the perspective of schools from different parts of the country. So that was, that was good. And then last thing is I will be presenting an IASBA workshop that Iowa staged in April. Third year forward and they keep asking me back and I'm not sure they'll ask me back after this year, but we'll see.
Well, thank you. So I am leaving on Saturday morning to attend NASB's Legislative Conference. So this is the first time that we will be in person since I was elected as the Chair of NASB's Board in 2019 in October. So it's gonna be really nice to see a lot of people that I've been talking with over the past two and a half years on the phone and via Zoom. So I will report back after that conference and John has agreed to join NASB's GAC Committee. So I know you served on that before, so Government Affairs Committee, so I'll be asking someone, I have someone in mind to join the Public Education Positions Committee, so. I won't let you know. That's all I have to report right now. Oh, wow, we're back on time.
Yeah, they just went up there. I'm sure when they're done.
You've got a crowd today. I am joining the ZEMEZ panelists. I have a really small PowerPoint to share with you. It's a kind of a summary of what we shared with you in November related to charter schools. So this will tie both to the Choice Charter School application, which is Tab M, and the Hamburg Charter High School application, which is Tab N. So those are the two charter schools that will be, that you'll be reviewing today related to approval of their application. So let me share my screen. Well, I'm getting a weird, let's try this. There we go. Okay. So we came to you in November during work, I should start by saying I'm Janel Brandhorst, I'm Bureau Chief for School Improvement. And I have with me Janet Boyd, who is our main consultant working with charter schools. She's, she did this under the old charter school law and is continuing it under 256E. And then Eric Hites and he's our Administrative Consultant for School Improvement. And we also have a lot of people in the room that might be able to help answer questions related to finance or CTE legal questions. So we'll kind of tag team whatever questions you guys have. We're going to try to talk as little as possible because we only have a half hour for each of these agenda items and we're thinking that you might have questions that you'd like to ask us. So Iowa Code 256E, which is also Administrative Rules, Chapter 19, 281, Chapter 19. Our new charter school, new charter school legislation that was, came during last session. They, rules and the law say that charter schools, just as a reminder, we hear this a lot when we're talking with people about charter schools. Charter schools are part of the public education program in Iowa, so they're not considered a private school, they're considered a public school. What was really new in the law was that charter schools can be established two different ways. So one way is with the school board bringing an application forward to you, state board members, and then the other one is an independent founding group, which is new in Iowa, can apply to be a charter school in the state. So applications for either of those models are made to you as the state board, you are the ones who approve or deny charter school applications. If we're gonna go forward, there we go. For this year, we had a very short timeline to receive applications and review applications. This will be different moving forward. But this year, applications needed to be submitted just by February 1st for a charter school opening in the fall of 2022. Moving forward, that date will be pushed back to November. So they'll, they'll be due November in 2022 to open in fall of 2023. So we'll have a much longer time period to review applications, do all of the things that we have to do and you'll, you'll have a longer, you'll have the same amount of time to consider them, but we had a really short timeline based on your board, or your board schedule, meeting schedule for this year. So we did receive two applications by the due date by February 1st. One is a founding group, state board model, which is the Choice Charter School, and one is a school board, state board, board model, which is the Hamburg High School Charter School. So you all have 75 days after the application is received to approve or deny it, which actually brings us to, or to April 16th, but we don't have another board meeting until May. So we're bringing this here to you today. But an important thing for you to know and consider. After, so you have, you have the opportunity to approve an application or to deny an application. Both of those need, have time for you to provide, if you're denying an application, written reasoning for why it's being denied. If you are approving an application, 30 days to execute a contract for that charter school. And then to remind you, what, what kind of the department's role is, is we, we we created application review criteria, we created a team of people that reviewed each of the applications and we had scoring criteria for them. And this is what we had brought you in November. So there were each, each item in the application and the application really carefully followed the law. The law was very specific about what needed to be in the application. Each question could receive zero points, one point, or two points from each person who was scoring. An application with a sum score of one or higher on each question would be recommended for approval. And we didn't have any, any questions for either of the charter schools where there was a sum score of zero. So everyone scored a score of one or higher, and I think it was actually three or higher for each question. And then the additional components of the application, besides the written application that was sent to us that was scored, was an in-person interview and Eric and Janet and I did that in-person interview with both of the applicants and a public forum. One of our charter schools is a, is a virtual charter school and so we did the public forum virtually. And, and people across the state could join that. And the other one, we traveled to Hamburg to attend the public forum there. And that's all I have, just to kind of reorient you to this. And then Janet will be able to go through the information that's in the board packet with you and talk more specifically about the charter schools. So the first one we'll look at is Tab M, Choice Charter School. I have a question. Yeah. Go back to the previous slide. I think there was something in there about executing a contract? Yes. Okay, so State Board of Education, so do we, I guess. Part of the application was for the, the charter applicants who have kind of a sample contract in their application. So you would have seen that if the applications were really long. So that was part of their application, but yes, the state board enters into a contract with the charter state. That's what I'm interested in, okay.
Which is a difference between the prior law and this law.
Okay.
Prior law, the, the application was a contract, in this law, there's a contract.
Isn't that a separate contract? So we do, okay.
I was gonna kind of just briefly cover the page, the page one of the, of the packet. And background there is, Janelle's already, maybe I should end this section. I'm Janet Boyd, charter school consultant. Janelle kind of talked about the code and so your background there has, has the code references in it and it also has live links. So that, you know, if you click on that, you get the actual code and you get the administrative rule, which is nice. And then, of course, you mentioned that that February 1st date for this go around. So we had, we did have two applicants. And I also should mention that the documents for application were made public on our website on December 17, 2021. And you also have a link to our website for the charter school. And then also, we are available for assistance and we did provide technical assistance for both of these applications. So the Dr. Knight of Choice Charter School had the application submitted on time before February 1st. And we notified her then by email that we had received her application. And in, just a brief summary of those proposals that they have, the Choice Charter School is an online statewide 912 charter school. And they're addressing the unique needs of students not successful in traditional high schools. So that's kind of a, one's in some summary of their, of their charter. The application that was submitted is in Appendix 1 of your packet. It's approximately 200-plus pages that is fairly, fairly long application process. And then the next review, the code states a number of things, but one of the things we wanted to highlight is that, you know, the, each application review shall include a thorough evaluation of the written application, an in-person interview with the applicant, and an opportunity for public forum for the res, local residents of the public school district or the charter school. So that's what we tried to do all of that very specifically. And so what we did is that we trained readers, so the department readers were, had a training on February 14th. And they were provided all the documentation and the training and they were asked to please have their, their summary done by February 21st. And the, the summary, the scores, that summary is available to you also in your packet, Appendix 2. So that shows you the summary of it.
Who provided the training?
I provided the training. Then, then as far as the meetings that were required, the required meetings of the applicant. We, we held a virtual meeting with each applicant and we went over what was going to be required and, you know, tried to, tried to explain, you know, each step that they were going to be required to do and the transparency that we needed to adhere to. And so we had those meetings, they occurred on February 11th virtually with both applicants. And in this case, Choice, Choice was in the morning of that day. Then the Choice Charter, we did both the interview with the founder and the public forum, those occurred on February 22nd. And they were both done virtually. Then, well, the next paragraph talks a little bit about the interview and then the interview summary is in this packet also. So Appendix 3 has the interview summary, the questions, the summary of what was stated. And finally, the public forum was on, again, on February 22nd. And we had a number of people come in virtually and, you know, testimonials to, to the, the premise of the charter. And then we had some students that were students of both Iowa Net High and, or I hope I'm saying that correctly, and Jordal Academy, which are both schools that are associated with Choice Charter. So those are, that's that first page of that packet. Our recommendation is that there was no scoring of a zero across the 28 items. The code, we're recommending that the state will approve the charter with or without conditions. And then of course, the applicant has responded affirmatively to all the assurances that in the code, there are a set of assurances that a charter must meet, certain code requirements that they must be, have responded affirmatively to all those assurances. And this particular charter has not requested any waivers at this time. Then your appendix, appendices, sorry, you have the actual application, then you have the reader score summary and also the interview summary. So that's kind of.
The public meeting, how is that, how did people know with Choice Charter Schools that there was going to be a public, how did that information get?
Public, the public meeting, really, we, we, we told our applicants that that's really their responsibility to, to kind of run that. And so the way we did for Choice was that it was, it was a Zoom. And they, they then, you know, got onto the Zoom, like it was advertised there, social media. And Dr. Knight did, ran the meeting, we were there for, for support.
And they've done a survey to determine need evidently. They've done a survey.
This particular charter, I'm not aware of the survey.
So guessing how many students they might have as opposed to some sort of measure.
Part of the, part of the application criteria is, is a estimate that, so.
And I saw that estimate, I wonder how they arrived at that, I guess.
That might be a good question for Dr. Knight.
Does, does this charter replace the Jordal Academy and the Net High or this is a separate entity from those two completely?
It is.
Each of those has a different grade level on, right, as I understand.
That's the last.
This would focus on high school, whereas Jordal and that are, are elementary and middle school?
I'd ask Dr. Knight, maybe she might, might be a better, the, the grade levels are different, yes, you're correct.
Okay.
What's the rationale for starting at, you know, the age 20, 21, grade 12, going down to like freshmen? Isn't that the timeline?
And I believe that not, a lot of her students are being served either by the resident district or by one of the other schools that she operates. And we're, we're looking, their target population is really dropout. Overage and undercredited. So you, you know, you're really, generally as a ninth grader, you're not getting be overaged and undercredited. It takes some time to get there. So I think, I, I don't mean to speak for Dr. Knight, but that, that's what I understood as the rationale.
And this is for profit, it's a for-profit school?
No, no, this is a public school.
Okay, so as a.
They'll pull for people funding, just like any public school, strictly public, public funding. Other funding that you could do with a charter is, you know, you, you could do, there are some grants available. The US Department of Education has a very large grant that they, I think both state agencies and charters can apply for. I think they could probably accept gifts. I'd have to look at my finance people for that, but yeah, it's a public school.
I, I can't find it, but I thought there was something in here that this is income, this is blah, and then they had net profit. What, yeah, I think. Was I dreaming or?
That's what I saw, Mike, and I asked the question.
And, and then, so I, my first thought, well, is this a for-profit and then it's not, so my question is, why would they put that in there? And.
Good, I'm gonna try and look, I got a bit of a cheat sheet.
Here we go. Is five-year plan, first year profit-loss $4,000, second year profit-loss $322,000. Third year profit-loss $1.9 million. Next year profit-loss $1.2 million, year five, $2 million. I, I, the pages aren't numbered, so I don't.
That's exactly what I was looking at.
I don't know how to get you where I am. You want me to come down there and show it to you?
No.
Yeah, it's right there.
It's one fifth, it's one like.
Don't have a page number.
Cassandra, I don't know if you have any feedback on that.
About the level of profit or about why?
Yeah, why would they show that?
They show that if it's a nonprofit.
Sure, so I, I think, just thinking about the over-under, maybe the comparison of revenue to expenditures, I don't know if profit would be the right maybe description in this sense. The five-year projection was required to be included as part of the rule for the applications themselves. And so the, the idea behind providing the difference between the revenues coming in and the expenditures going out is to illustrate sustainability.
Well, yeah, she uses the term profit, that's why, yeah, I started kind of pulling it out of there. So I'll step in another one. So under this new charter school law, can a nonprofit apply for a charter? So can we, if I have a, we can, we, yes, someone.
Um, you know, in other states too, they have charter management organizations that are nonprofit and for-profit. Charter management organizations and the code, you know, allows for that. But they can't, and I may say this wrong, but you can't profit. You can, you can contract with an educational service provider. But the school itself can't be a profit, for-profit. Did I say that correctly? I'm looking at my people over there.
I know this is all new, I mean.
School districts are not. Contract of all kinds of profit.
As a nonprofit, the charter school itself, who the charter school does business with, whether that, whether their vendor is for-profit or non-for-profit, that's really local governance. I think for purposes of this five-year projection, I think rather than profit retained earnings is a better way of thinking about it. It's like building up a cushion, rainy day fund.
It just means nonprofit doesn't mean revenue doesn't exceed expense, it means all private people get the money.
But it does beg, beg the question, what do you do with their extra money? So if I take in that much money, what do I do with the 1.2 billion?
Use it exclusively for your mission, which is with a governing document.
Pay, pay teachers.
How much, how much can you retain? I mean, it's just a question. Is there no question about, I mean, $20 million I could retain, $50 million?
I'm not as familiar with.
That's called an order.
It would be up to plan for sustainability, the plan for the retained earnings, the rainy day fund, as you call it, and, and what those ideas behind governance and structure would be, I think that would be more of a control opportunity for them.
And there are nonprofit standards for like, what is the ideal amount of earnings, like what fraction of revenue? So if I'm retaining two, if under those standards, a not-for-profit is retaining too much earnings, should they expand their program or reduce their cost to participants? That, there's no set amount, that there are guidelines for reasonableness when a nonprofit has a larger amount of retained earnings.
Yeah, I have to tell you, coming from a tuition world, in the school boards I've been on, and the accountability to the people who pay the tuition, I'm really not worried about having too much money. You, you have to answer to the people, that's what their board is for. So I, it would be great to have that issue, but I don't.
Well, this is a unique circumstance here. Just to follow up, let's say that this event contract, I was looking through the notes, I didn't see any contract in there, maybe I missed it.
There is for Choice at the end.
Okay.
I didn't see it for the other one, that's, is there, okay, it's just not in the same spot.
Look again, but let's say it's for five years, is that correct?
It is five.
Okay, then after the fifth year, if, or sooner if the organization decides that the charter business is not for us, is there, what's the process to decertify?
It's very similar to what we had with the other charter law and that you, you, it comes before you to renew. So you, you can say, we do not choose to renew this. And also, there is a process for revocation. So, and I try to remember the best I can in the law, but you know, it's something more to occur, like for example, the, the assurances that they, let's say that they don't hire appropriately certified. it's something more to occur, like for example, the the assurances that they, let's say that they don't hire appropriately certified licensed Iowa teachers as they are, as they have to and they're musts and they assured us that they would. And that goes on and they don't correct that. Then it comes out to the board and and the board can say, you're not, you're into the contract. And then you can.
Do desk audits and how frequently?
Well, it's gonna, there's gonna be a report done annually that you will see that. Remember how the report comes to you now? For the under two fifty-six F, the same thing will happen. It will come to you and you will review that report. And so you'll see that. There's also a performance framework that they must need. They must provide data to us and it comes in the form of that report. There's actually an additional report with this new law and that they must submit. So there's, there's lots of reporting. There's no, there's nothing that says that that a department representative couldn't couldn't visit, you know, if there were concerns, you know, we could, we can come on site. We can pick up the phone and call and and find out, you know, it'd be just like any other public school and that we would have.
I think that's the thing to keep in mind, since it's like any other public school, the things that we're doing with public schools, desk audits and kind of the accreditation things that Thomas talked about earlier today and and the rules that you adopted can apply to charter schools.
And I think I think there's probably a little bit more oversight with a charter than there is with a with a right, a traditional high school or.
So how is special education handled with this charter school?
They have to provide special education services. That's in, that's in kind of the list of musts. They they have to provide special education services, EL services, gifted talent services and at-risk students. I know that's probably not, that's kind of an old term, but you know, students that would be at risk to fail.
If I remember right, that was part of, we had an interview question around that and we talked with them about that. And I think that tonight talked about collaboration with the ADAs especially for special education.
They are, they are eligible, any charter is eligible for AA services.
It is her bailiwick, I think, isn't it, Dr. Knight? That's her bailiwick. I mean, that's what she does.
And she is here today. I don't know. We didn't actually introduce her. She's here.
That's that's why I said maybe some of those questions might be good for Dr. Knight, so.
I think I understand how the scoring occurs, but how should we view these scores? So eight is the maximum and I or people and they get two points. Whatever. So is it so subjective that you can't really answer this? But what if it's a four? What what does a four? I mean, that just, that might just tell me each reviewer gave him one point instead of two points. What does that suggest to us in terms of the quality of the application?
I think based on the scoring rubric that we shared. Any, any, any item that didn't receive a zero across, right, means that that it is satisfactory, the response to the item is satisfactory. When we talked about this in November, we talked about lower scores for any particular items probably helps us know what kinds of support the charter school might need. And so lower scores are a signal for the department to know where support, particular support might be needed.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
And there are some, I actually highlighted in in the reader scores that you that you received in the the packet. Number fifteen and fifteen point one and fifteen point two both scored four. Number sixteen.
I think the lowest score I ever saw, I saw was a four, I think.
No, okay. So is the delivery mechanism primarily online? Is that a union? You have a, the building is located in Union. So students can come there.
And actually, there is also a physical location for Dartal Academy, which will also serve as a physical location for if students need that location. And Dr. Knight, I'm correct, those are the only two fiscal locations and then they use public, public buildings, other places.
But again, primarily an online delivery system, that's what we're saying.
So the the recommendation is to approve with or without conditions. Talk to me a little bit about conditions, or be an example of a condition.
Well, you could, you could give a condition that. I can think of a good condition for.
Oh, let's exclude these two schools that have applied, so.
You know, and they they have the ability to ask for a waiver. And, um, you know, it had a choice asked for a waiver and it wasn't real clear if that there was a good educational reason for that waiver. I think a condition around a waiver might be, might be good. You know, let's say that this, this particular charter is going to be competency-based. And maybe you want to see more information about what is considered competent, you know, and you know, that kinds of things.
You know, and in the law, the conditions come in related to, they're kind of in between the application process and the contract process. So it states that an approval decision may include, if appropriate, reasonable conditions that the founding group must meet before the charter school's contract may be executed. So it would be some, some condition that they would need to meet between now and the next thirty days when we execute a contract.
So like the waiver can, you know, the waiver example, you know, you could say, you know, we want XYZ information about your request for a waiver.
So the language in your recommendation, is it just parroting what the law says?
Yes, I mean, reminding you that you have the opportunity.
But from your perspective, you did not see a condition that you thought would be important for this board to know about.
Was that, did any scores have conditions that they recommended?
Not really on this particular charter, no.
So are all the classes competency-based? It's not seat time. It's just as quick as I can progress through that. Then in another area, it says, but students have time to dig deeper into subject matter. Those don't necessarily go together. If if I'm basing this on seat time and I want to finish those competencies in a month. And I'm I'm done with the course. It doesn't necessarily align itself with, wow, I'm going to dig deep into the subject matter. And it's going to take me a long, longer point of time and. Anyway, I'm.
I get what you're saying. I think a lot of times when people say seat time, they think of a hundred and twenty hours.
Right, right.
And I I think if there you have a really bright kid that can move through curriculum quickly. I mean, the seat time is kind of a waste of their time.
No, I absolutely, it online certainly lends itself to that kind of approach, but I'm wondering where the, where those two intersect with each other and where they run into each other. A deep dive into subject matter may take me another month. Do I really want to do that or I'm just concerned about getting the competencies finished so that I can move on to the next thing?
The things that they talked about was the fact that they would have a mentor to kind of help with the students. And I think that's kind of where you can get in, you know, if a student's getting way too deep taking way too long, that that mentor can work with the student saying, okay, let's, we need to pull back a little bit, making sure that we're on our our timetable or also from the other's perspective, kind of, I don't want to say prod, but kind of say, okay, let's keep moving. We gotta keep going because this is our goal. This is where we want to be. And and so we can, so we, how do we get there?
And every student does have a mentor. I mean, it was part of the.
So I I kind of had a question about the mentors. Do I remember the mentors to meet each student twice a week? And I think, wasn't the ratio one mentor to fifteen students? Is that right?
Yes.
So let's just say it's an hour each meeting, that's thirty hours a week. So my question is, was there any question about the ability of this charter school to find enough mentors to do what they say they want to do?
There was not a specific question about that. They did have to include a staffing plan. But we didn't have any specific question about, do you think you're going to find enough staff to fulfill your staffing plan? I don't know if you have any additional comment on that.
We haven't had any trouble so far. People to in the communities where we currently are.
So you think statewide, you'll have no problem getting the number of mentors that you feel you need? Thank you.
One thing about mentors that we did kind of reiterate is that, you know, there's a teacher and a mentor would be different. You know, the teaching duties, they still have to adhere to the teaching duties that are in chapter twelve. So the mentor maybe not couldn't teach content, they're not licensed.
You know, I love the idea of competency base. Of course, I I love that and online is definitely a good way to do that. I think that from what I heard and read that this would be a good one for us to approach as our, our test case, if you will. I I so I, if we're ready for a motion, I would be willing to make that motion that we approve this.
Are you making that motion?
I am.
I would second that. I I I think it's something new. I don't know that we know exactly where this is going to go.
I'm not sure we know the questions to ask.
Yeah, and and so I I agree with you. I will second it. I'd like discussion first, please.
Okay, so it's going to second now. Yes, discussion.
Yeah, somebody point me to the contract. What page is that on?
Eight twenty, eight twenty-one or.
It's right before appendix.
Eight twenty-one for Hamburg and the last thing for charter.
So it's the last part of appendix. Yes, it's the, so the end of appendix is under bylaws.
It's the very.
I mean, I think I may have gone back to.
It's the last thing before you get.
Is there a page?
I think there's about, it's about at two fifty.
Two fifty.
Now the bylaws. So note to self, ask applicants to include page numbers. As always.
Choice, it's after the conflict of interest policy, which is after the.
So it's it's at the, it's the last. It's at the end of a.
It will be very similar to way they have.
Did you find it? How frequently and early on, I mean, is it?
And you'll see that report that will come to you just like the the prior.
So you don't have much of an idea what's going on for nine months in this.
No, that'll be part of our, kind of the monitoring process that we do with all districts and public schools. Public school, but the report to all of you at the state board will be an annual report. That performance framework that we've talked about, that includes like early literacy screening data, assessment data, conditions for learning data. Part of what we do in the contract is set targets for all of those things in the performance framework, part of what you do in that contract. So I think that that will be an important thing for you to consider when you're creating the contract is what targets do you want to see on those.
Thomas, have you reviewed this contract?
It's, it's a standard first party. And so if there are conditions that this board chooses to attach, it covers the terrain that the statute requires. I've got those concerns about the contract.
Is there a reason why the choice contract is not with the department, but it's with the state board of ed? Well, the, the other contract doesn't even mention, it says it's with the public's charter school, Hamburg Charter School and their Hamburg Community School District.
Yeah, the contract is with the state board.
But where does, where does it say that in Hamburg? Well, that was just confusing to me that.
Statute requires it to be with.
And so, but this has to be entered into within thirty days. We've done enough contract. You know, we sure this is gonna, that sounds jurisdictional. Better get done, right?
It comes to light.
Well, what if it doesn't? Players don't like deadline.
Three days seems like, I don't know.
They operate. No, I didn't mean that. I mean, whenever you say, you will agree to this later, right?
That your vote today does not approve the contract. Your your vote today, today approves the application. Would sort of sets the guardrails around the bargaining of the contract.
Contract is going to be with the state board. Are we going to delegate that to the department of ed and you to do?
So the.
Trying to understand.
The the signatory authority of the contract is the president of the state board.
I won't speak for Brooke, but maybe I will. She might need a little guidance along the way.
Department stands ready to provide technical assistance to both houses. And to the state.
Okay, so what we are approving with the motion is is to approve.
But not, yeah.
But we're not approving the contract.
I have thirty days from today. The clock starts today.
So does the board have to, does the board have to come back and then remove that before they?
I would say, I would.
And have you done electronically? So it's not really an obstacle.
Once you decide today, the department will work to make sure that the contract is enacted by whoever needs to enact it, signed by whoever needs to sign it. But then thirty days, I don't want to get steps out of sequence. I think we need to. Tab M, tab N. And if those two, if those are approved for the two applicants to move forward. We'll make sure that the timing happens.
I just last thing said, I think it's kind of an exciting opportunity. I I'm glad to see folks with the initiative to do. Relatively good success with your other two initiatives. I like to see it happen. I like to see it successful. I hope we can help these folks in any possible way we can be successful to help kids that need some help. So I I would like to move the question.
Before we do that, can we have Dr. Knight, I know she's here and there were a couple of questions. I know you had a couple of questions that maybe she could have answered, so. Is it okay if we have?
Sure, sure. I can withdraw.
Sorry, sorry, I just, I.
No, I didn't want to.
Well, I'm thrilled that you're looking forward. In the education for these kids, there's forty-five hundred that dropped out last year and we got to do something. I've been passionate about this for twelve years and will not let you down. These kids need us. They need something different that's not being offered right now and we offer that, so. Thrilled, so. To be here and to tell you and I I'm open to coming to any meeting and letting you know how things are going along the way. I want it to be public. I want it to be transparent. I integrity is important.
Again, I'm willing to call the question if we're.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, so we've had a motion, I believe, in a second. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose? Right, the motion carries. All right, so then we move on to tab N. And we do have Dr. here from Hamburg who can answer questions as well.
Before Dr. Wells comes up, guys, I I read this last night. I tried to read as much of it as I could. I confess that I did not get it all read. I I think I had a pretty good idea what was going on, but I just couldn't get it done in one evening, even one of these. Let alone two of them and then all the other stuff. So help us out with you. If you can, help us to to get that a little quicker. Thank you. Thanks to everybody. You guys, I know you've really worked hard on this and I appreciate, appreciate your helping. It's hard to answer some of the questions. I understand.
The same kind of brief overview that we did before. Again, on this application, the second page is the kind of our overview. You have, again, the law outlined there and in this particular case. outlined there. And in this particular case, we posted December seventeenth, the materials and provided technicals. Okay, to the applicant, the applicant did apply before February first. The application is in its entirety, it's one. And it is a long document. And kind of a note, a brief one sentence for Hamburg Charter High School, they're they're going to operate within their school district. That's the, the school board, state board model that is within a school district in a different place. And it's going to be a, you know, a competency kind of project-based career academy. It's going to serve nine, twelve students. And I would remind you that Hamburg does not currently have a high school at this time. So again, the code, the evaluation of the written materials, their application, an in-person interview with the applicant and an opportunity for a public forum. Uh, that was again, the same, same criteria as the other applicant. We did the readers training on the fourteen. They submitted their scores on the, the twenty-first of February. And that, that is an appendix to. It starts on page two eighteen. I know that doesn't do you a lot of good. I'm sorry. I will tell you that there was a, and when we get to that, I can show you, there was a, there was one number missing on that reader's score. I apologize. We, we dropped a number. So number eighteen, it needs a number. I'll show you that when I get to that part. But then, um, we of course did a virtual meeting with the, the founding group, which is Dr. Wells and Jackie Barnett and that we went over what, what we needed from them as far as the interview and the public meeting and talked about what the code says as far as transparency and those sorts of things. Then we did have the, the interview with the founding group and the public meeting occurred on February twenty eighth. And so that occurred in person at Marnie Simons Elementary School. You have the kind of the synopsis or summary of the interview with Dr. Wells, Jackie Barnett, and and that's in appendix three of the application. And then also, I would tell you that they had a very large turnout for their public meeting with really good questions. There was probably two hundred plus community members at the public meeting. So that was a good, a good turnout. We are recommending that they be approved based on the fact that they received no sum of zero on the twenty-eight criteria that are in code on our application. And they did ask for waivers. And there is a waiver, they want to waive the school year beginning date exception. They also went to waive in chapter twelve, physical education, fine arts, and foreign language. And in the application on page thirty-six, it talks about those waivers. There is justification for the first waiver, the justification. They did not include any justification for the waiver. Or sort of the actual application. Two, the reader's score summary, and then number three, the interview summary. And I will, I did my mistake on the reader's score summary is on, it's number eighteen, the proposed governing bylaws. They, it should have been a five, and there was no number there. So that's kind of our our summary of that application.
Dr. Wells, we had a, a nice meeting with you previously. We disbanded the high school and I think were the hardest things I've ever done. And because you worked so hard to try to meet all of our objections and what you saw were, were good things for your kids. I, I have no doubt about your sincerity and especially because we're tired of this. So appreciate your coming and, and, and working with us. And it sounds like you have great community support. How are the other school districts reacting to what you're doing?
Well, and we've had communications. This school is to get a trade. This school isn't for every student, and we've already met with Sydney and we have a two-year, we're going to finalize a two-year agreement. A lot of students currently go to Sydney or Shandong or Essex are going to continue. This isn't for every kid. This is for the kid who wants to get a trade, wants to get their A degree while they're in high school. And it's a small school. Yeah, we don't see it ever being more than sixty students. And we will have a tuition agreement with Sydney. We will transport to those schools. We're not encouraging kids who currently are going to other schools to stop going. We're really looking at growing with the kids we have. And that every kid would have a real trade when they come out of high school, and that's really the focus of the school. So we have had communications. There's been a change in the process. We don't receive transportation money from Sydney. We give them all the money and we transport, and we're willing to continue to do that, but they've come back with, they would give us some transportation funds. So our relationship is good with those schools. And to be honest, there's kids that we will tell, this isn't for you. If you're lazy, this is not the school for you. If you're going to roll your sleeves, you're going to build a house. You're going to weld, you're going to be a plumber. If that's not you, it's okay. And we do have kids who want to come. They're, they're not good candidates for the school. And so we, we want to help build a workforce for our community. And we have great community partners. There was, that gym was packed. There's a lot of interest there. And I know, uh, last time we came in front of you, one of the comments was, if there was a way we could give you a high school, and if it failed, we wouldn't have to close you, we would do it. And so I feel like I should have a chair at the table and I should have a name plaque. And this is something we can do for our community. It's not just Hamburg, though. Just like Cynthia said, there are a ton of dropouts in southwest Iowa. A traditional school doesn't fit them. This is a chance for you to roll your sleeves, work. We have a ton of kids who love to work. And they just don't do well in a traditional school. This would provide that opportunity. And we don't care where kids come from. We, we would take anyone. And so we're excited and we appreciate the opportunity.
And what excites me about what you're doing is rising expectations. I, I just think that your kids are no different than the other kids in Iowa, except the community, sometimes we have lower expectations about what we can achieve and what we can do. And, and I, I'm not saying that parents don't want the best for their kids. I'm just saying that's a reality that we deal with. And, and it's, it seems to me you are raising expectations. You are saying there's more out there. I want to help you get there. So again, I appreciate what you're doing.
Yes.
Dr. Wells. As I say, as I've matured, I forgot. Previous visit to our board. There was a lot of talk about a relationship with Iowa Western Community College. And my feeling at the time when you were here previously, there wasn't anything concrete that you could report. How has that changed in this application?
So our students, they'll have a choice. They'll pick a track they want to do. If a student wants to get an AA degree, I'm interested in being a welder. They will actually sit on Iowa Western campus taking some classes. So we'll have a real partnership for the AA degree. For the others, the construction trades, they'll get Iowa Western credit and either certificate, diploma or a degree from Iowa Western. They are a partner. Now, there are parts of Iowa Western, they don't offer all the programs we need. So, and this was a conversation in our meeting about jumping the state line. We currently have kids, I do Essex and Hamburg. We have kids from Essex that take evening classes at Tarkio Tech School in heating and cooling, because there's no heating and cooling in Iowa Western. They also have a shortened welding program, the different types of welding that Iowa Western doesn't offer. So we can jump borders, but we have a really strong, there's a new president at Iowa Western. Uh, he's doing our CNA for Essex and he will do it for Hamburg. We have construction trades they do with Iowa Western, they'll do for Hamburg. So those relationships exist. But one of the things we always have to look at is cost. We expect to be treated fairly. And we can't pay you seven thousand dollars a kid because we don't get, that's what we get. And so those contracts is always a, a give and take kind of system. And we also have a partner with American Builders, ABC. And they can do that certification without charging you. And so we do have partnerships with them on the electrical. Probably the strongest part of our program is kids will be placed in apprenticeship programs in the summer. As a freshman, you will work ten hours in your field. A sophomore, twenty, a junior, thirty, and as a senior, you'll be a full-time employee in the field you think you're interested. That allows a kid who's a, a freshman to do construction in the hayday. You know what? You can, you can change that. I decided I don't want to crawl on rest. I'd rather go to college. But getting those skills are very important, and they're paid positions. And kids find out that the real boss doesn't care that you stayed up late. They expect you to be here on time and they will kick you in the butt if you don't do those things. And I think that's the one thing in public schools we do very poorly. We do not teach kids to roll their sleeves and work. And I think this school will allow that. And for our community, building houses and rebuilding after floods, these are important for us.
Thank you.
Yes.
One more?
No, you.
I probably asked you.
I'm here all day.
Yeah, will you do Iowa assessments with these kids? Will they take Iowa assessments?
Yes. So in our plan, we have a portfolio assessment. Iowa Assessment Council is twenty-five percent of the total assessment system. They would have a mentor on the job that would give them a twenty-five percent grade. Attendance, punctuality, those kinds of things. They have their own personal portfolio, which would be fifty percent of their evaluation system, which they would present to the school board saying, this is where I want to be. At the beginning of the year, they present to the board. At the end of the year, they present, this is what I accomplished, or what I didn't accomplish, and why I did.
That's, that's perfect. But I, I think that you would want to have that information yourself. I mean, how, how are we doing literacy wise? How are we doing mathematically? I, I mean,
Every kid.
Need to do something more with that. But I'm glad to hear you're doing that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I didn't ask for a waiver for that.
No, and the waiver thing was. So if we, if we do what we want to do, half days in real career academies, not that we're not offering art, Spanish, those are, will still be offered. They wouldn't have to do that. If they would rather be working on a construction site, I don't want them saying, well, I can't do that because I got to take pottery. But those options still are available. We just don't want to require them. We do ask for some waivers in physical education, art, and foreign language. I'm sorry.
Do you have agreements or are these students be able to participate in activities? So you're partnering a school right now. So if somebody might go out for band or they want to be in football or something, can those kids still have part of those activities?
Yes, sir. So we've talked with athletic associations. We can have our own sports as a charter. But the sports we can't do, we have to use Sydney. Sydney's agreed to allow, that meeting was Monday night. So football, we know, we'll have to share football. We don't have enough kids, but volleyball and basketball, especially girls' sports, we have plenty of. I would want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other additional questions?
I'll move approval. Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, oh, discussion, sorry. Any more discussion? Did you want to say something? Okay. No, no, no. All right, it's moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Feel like a politician.
Mike's nice saying again.
Yeah, we'll come back in five minutes.
Dave, we're going to come back in five minutes.
They are here.